Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. This is the April 15th regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners for April 15th, 2019. We ran a little bit late because we had a work session right before the Commissioners' meeting, so... But if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that I'll invite our Chaplain Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward and give our invocation.
(Inaudible)
May we pray. Almighty God, our Father in Heaven, we rejoice in you and give thanks for all of your glorious blessings of life. Thanking you this day for the beautiful blue sky and the sunshine and the flowers that remind us of new life. Bless these our Commissioners with encouragement, and pray that after already meeting for a long period, you'll give them strength for the meeting ahead. Bless them with wisdom and discernment in making decisions. Help them to see beyond what is even on the page, to discern matters more deeply. And Lord, grant that we all may have wisdom in governing and as citizens alike, and may all praise, honor, and glory be unto you. In the name of the Lord we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Patrick. Reverend Womack. Okay, we have no public hearings at this time. Our next item of business will be our public comment session. I have three or four people signed up, and if after these folks have spoken, if you want to speak, you can just raise your hand. You can speak for three minutes. We'd ask that you identify who you are and where you're from, maybe in the county, and tell us... Then you have three minutes to make public comment. Please speak into the mic that's there, because if you can't like this, you can't hear me, but when you get close, you can hear somebody. So please speak in the mic, and Candy will be keeping time. On the podium, there is a... There's lights. When there's yellow light, you have around 30 seconds, and when it's red light, your time's up. We would ask that you conclude your comments at that time. So the first person I have to speak to sign up is Jeanne Paris.
Thank you for the opportunity to come again to visit with y'all, and I know that you sit back and say, "Oh, no, not her again." Well, I came to invite you to another prayer for Haywood. This time, it will be in Maggie Valley. It will be at John Swanger's Church there in their new church, and I hope you will be there, Calvary Roads Church. And it will be similar to the one in Canton, except for the fact that this is the National Day of Prayer, is May the 2nd. And so on May the 2nd, we are going to have special prayers at our program, and they will take up about 20 minutes of the time, because we have six people who are going to pray for different things, like unity, the youth, the schools, and to honor the Day of Prayer. Thank y'all for your attendance at the meeting in Canton. We really appreciate you being there, and I think that you got a blessing for being there. I think it was a powerful program, and we had over 400 people there. So we hope we'll do just as well, and Calvary Roads Church is big. It will hold those, I think, about 800 people, and we'd really like to fill it up. But we would like to see your faces there and tell in Maggie Valley that you care about them also. And that's how people in Canton say, "Oh, how did you get them to do that?" I said, "I just invited them." I didn't tell them, I pushed you a little bit, but anyway, I was glad you were there, and I hope you will come to Maggie Valley, because seeing your faces as our leading members of our community, that we know that you care about the people and that you're aware of the drug epidemic. But this is not what the Prayer for Haywood is about. Prayer for Haywood is about all the issues in Haywood County. So the program, the music will start at 6 o'clock, the speakers will start at 7 o'clock, so any time in between. So we hope you'll be there, and we will be getting a letter out to you to remind you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Paris. Okay, our next speaker is Karen Owens. Welcome.
It's been a while. I'm Karen Owens. I'm co-founder of the Star Ranch Horse Rescue. We have been in Haywood County now for 13 years. I didn't know when we started this, I spoke to you when we started 13 years ago, that we would see 138 horses, but we have. As Tommy Long knows, we met with the County Fairgrounds Board on April 1st. We presented them with the reasons that any circus, let alone Garden Brothers, with their record of charges against them should not be allowed in Haywood County ever again. So how does a circus keep operating with no USDA license and hundreds of USDA charges, lawsuits, and animal cruelty charges against them? They dodge bullets by changing their name, and they shut one business and open another one. It's all the same, Father and Three Sons. King Cole, Extravaganza, Inc., Piccadilly Circus, Toby Tyler Circus, Sterling and Reed Brothers, Garden Family Shows, Circus Matrix, Wonder Zoo, and now Garden Brothers Circus, all the same outfit. They just keep changing one business because of all the charges that come against them. Their public safety record is enough to keep them out. Two elephants escaped during a show in years past, injuring many ticket holders. Bleachers collapsed in New York, 70 were injured, lots of lawsuits, shut that circus down. One circus employee shot another one. A tiger named Tony escaped. A bear fell off a truck. A high-wire act fell into a crowd. An aerial act fell through a net. A tent collapsed. In February of 2017, a scheduled performance in Lowndes County, Georgia, was canceled because that county refused to issue a permit determining on their research that, unquote, "Garden Brothers Circus Safety Record Involving Animals in the Public Is Not Satisfactory." Our Sheriff Greg Christopher is in Raleigh as we speak today, working to amend a 1953 statute that ties his hands to refuse a permit for fairgrounds use. His only objection now can be that if the event conflicts with another event in the county, he can and should be able to refuse a permit based on public safety and animal cruelty charges. In 2016, Garden Brothers were finally no longer allowed to own their own elephants. In February of 2016, there was a news release in Ohio paper, and I quote, "The Garden Brothers Circus is bringing elephants to be seen for the last time in its show here." USDA pulled their license. They could no longer own elephants. So how do they get around all this? They lease them from Carson &amp; Barnes, which is another equally awful report about elephant abuse, and Garden Brother now operates under their license since they don't have one. Where do these animals come from? Illegal animal trafficking. Poachers steal baby elephants, shipping them to circuses all over the world. That's when the torture really begins. With over 40 countries now banning traveling exotic animals, this diabolical trade is slowing. Ringling Brothers finally ended, May of 2017, citing too many legal battles of animal cruelty charges, so after 146 years, the saddest show on earth is over. To quote from a Saranac, New York paper, "Hosting Garden Brothers or any circus with animals endangers the public and is tantamount to supporting animal cruelty." Now that both Haywood County Boards have seen, and you know what really goes on with animals, and you know that public safety is involved with issues here, please, let's not make the same mistake twice.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Our next person to sign up to speak is Rosemary Thompson.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The next person to speak is Rosemary Thompson.
My name is Jacqueline Muth, and I'm here because I love animals, and I cannot stand to see animals being hurt. The subject here is torture, the torture of animals that cannot defend themselves. I'm going to be reading from a woman who could not make it today, and so I'm stepping in for her, but I certainly support her words, and they go as follows. Can you help me here? It went out. Torture is necessary to tame a wild animal and teach it to stand on its head. Wild animals do not naturally stand on their head. It's necessary to inflict sustained torture in order to do the business of entertaining children under a tent. Those same children would never set foot in a circus if there were glass walls where they could see through, to see the blood that drips from the back of elephant ears on a daily basis. If they could see the baseball bats strike an elephant's face. If they could ride in trains with the elephants for hundreds of hours without light. If a child could see, it would cry itself to sleep and never forget what it had witnessed. What it takes for one elephant to stand on its head is not worth a lifetime of beatings, isolation, and deprivation. There is not a good day to watch the hidden camera videos of the brutality inflicted on these animals, but I ask you to watch one before you ever let these sadistic handlers back into Haywood County. I thank you in advance for the courage it will take to help end this horrific form of animal cruelty. You, gentlemen, have the power to end this here. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is Rosemary Thompson here? Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Rosemary. I live in Canton in the Springdale Country Club community. I love it here. So we know that the majority of the public... Thank you. ...now regards animal performance as outdated and cruel. In 2015, a Gallup poll showed that 69% of Americans are either concerned or very concerned about the welfare of circus animals. Last year, Nabisco even redesigned their Barnums Animal Crackers box and freed the circus animals from their cages, recognizing evolving public opinion. And we know that hundreds of U.S. municipalities already prohibit animal circuses, including a growing number in the Carolinas, Asheville, Chapel Hill, Orange County in North Carolina, and Greenville, Spartanburg, Aiken County, Edgewood County, and the USC campus in South Carolina. And late last year, both New Jersey and Hawaii banned animal circuses statewide, and this year, California, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Pennsylvania legislators introduced bills that would do the same in their states. But luckily, we all can still enjoy acrobats, jugglers, motorcycle stunts, and other thrilling human acts, as there are several popular traveling circuses that are totally animal-free, and that number is growing. And there's a list of popular animal-free circuses in the packet. So it's just not safe to put the public in unnaturally close proximity to these large, stressed, unpredictable wild animals. Even competent trainers cannot protect themselves, let alone the public, when an elephant or a tiger finally snaps or escapes. In addition, approximately 18% of Asian elephants suffer from tuberculosis, a form that can be and has been passed on to humans. So due to the overwhelming evidence of extreme confinement and abuse and unsafe conditions, we ask that the Board consider prohibiting exotic animal performance within Haywood County, and a copy of the Orange County, North Carolina ordinance is included in the packet as a sample of what that language might look like. Any future animal circuses that do come to this area will likely bring protests, outcry, and negative public attention with them. Nobody wants to support animal abuse, but by deciding not to bring this brutal practice into our community, Haywood County can align the family entertainment it provides with the values of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Julie Smith. Is that the name, Julie Smith?
(Inaudible).
Oh, okay. Thank... Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Would anyone else like... Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in the audience? Anybody? Okay. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to constituent concerns, and Mark, do you have any? Kirk?
No, I haven't. I mean, I heard these constituent concerns, but I haven't. I don't have any independent.
Okay. And we do have your information that we can look at. I guess everybody got that. Okay. Okay, Brandon?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay, and then our next item of business will be administrative agency reports, and we have none of those. Is there any discussion or adjustment to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and I'm just going to go through these, and then we can... If y'all have any questions that you can ask. Okay, the first will be a budget amendment for special revenue funds for our service districts, and that's our road districts, fire districts, and sanitary districts, of $285,439 of additional revenue coming in that must be paid to the special districts. The next item, B, is the general fund is a Health and Human Services Administration, DSS, $5,200, which is a local grant from the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina for the Melzone Wheels Program to serve additional citizens who qualify for the program. C, the next item, is from the general fund, it's the Health and Human Services, Environmental Health, for $12,526, which is additional funding from the North Carolina Division of Public Health to cover state-mandated food and lodging programs and activities. And these are where we're inspecting restaurants and other venues that the Health Department does. The next item, D, is from the general fund, public safety from the Sheriff's Office for $11,410, its funds received from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for aid provided by the Sheriff's Office in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence. And what that is, is the sheriff helped during Hurricane Florence, and this is a reimbursement that's coming to him from, I believe, the county down east where the hurricane... I forget the county, but it's in your pack. The number... Number three is to request approval of the audit contract with Gould Killian CPA Group, PA, to audit the county's physicals as of June 30th, 2019. And the last item, number four, is to request approval for public fireworks display at Chestnut Ridge Event Center on April 27th, May 17th, and May 18th of this year. Okay, at this time, does anyone have any questions to the consent agenda? And like I say, this was in your packet, so... And by the way, on the budget amendments, Julie does a good job describing the explanation for those. If you ever, you know, you're wondering what it is, just look at the explanation. I'm sure y'all already do that, but for the public, if you review our budget amendments, you can see the explanation there, so it'll be in there. Okay, if there's any question... If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, Candy. Okay, or under our regular agenda, the first item of business is to request approval of the March 19th refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. We have our tax assessor Judy Hickman here for that.
Good evening. I'm requesting approval of the March 2019 releases, refunds, amendments, and discoveries. Under the motor vehicle refunds, we had $131.75, $13,527.08 for releases, and under our discoveries, we had $12,951.75.
Anyone have any questions for Judy? We need a vote. Is that... Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We approve this request.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I forgot, I missed the minutes from the consent agenda to announce that. Thank you, Judy. I'm sorry. Can we have a motion to approve the amendments? I apologize.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that. Reason we have a consent agenda is try to speed things up, and I just sped right over that.
That's pretty good.
Okay, great. The next is to request approval of the March 2019 tax collections, updates, and refunds. We have our tax collector Greg West with us. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request the approval of the March 2019 tax collections, updates, and refunds. As of March 31st, we had collected $38,034,97.21 for a collection percentage of 95.60%. We collected around $829,715 in March. Our past dues for 2018, as of March 31st, was $1,748,65. Pertaining to the refunds, we had refunded $1,715.61. I'd be glad to answer any questions concerning either of these items.
Am I having questions for Greg?
Greg, you feel comfortable where we are right now?
I think so. Talking with Bryant, I think that we are on pace for our budget, and we finally have our percentages a little bit higher than last time. We've been working hard to get there, and I'd like to give all the credit to the staff. We've been... We have full staff now, and we are working diligently to collect these past due taxes and work with people that we can and be fair in doing so. So I feel pretty good about it. We already collected almost $400,000 some thousand more than we did last year at this time, which our levy increased almost that much, so we should have collected that much more, and we've got a decent month going so far this month. So as of the 11th, we had collected $38,162,813, so that's $128,000 this month. We still have 10 days to go, so...
Okay.
But yes, I feel pretty good about it.
And you're at full staff now because you were short how many?
Two people.
Two people?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Because you kept having turnover, and I guess that's...
That's correct.
You've been able to stay on...
Yeah. We've got a good staff.
Yeah, okay, great.
Very pleased with him. It's been going well.
Is any other questions for Greg? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax collections, updates, and refunds as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, the third item is to request approval of a proclamation recognizing May the 12th through the May the 18th, 2019, as National Police Week with... We have our Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes here. Welcome, Jeff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. What we'd like to do, or what you have before you today, is a proclamation recognizing May the 12th through the 18th, the entire week is National Police Week. I have a proclamation to read for that. Says, "Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated that there be a National Police Officers Memorial Day, and whereas the members of the Sheriff's Office and police departments serve an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the citizens of Haywood County, and whereas it is important to recognize the duties and responsibilities of law enforcement officers and agencies, and to express appreciation for the contributions made by law enforcement officers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Haywood County, North Carolina, does hereby call upon all citizens to observe May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as National Police Week with a ceremony honoring our fallen officers on Tuesday, May 14th, 2009, adopted this 15th day of April, 2009."
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Where will that ceremony be held, Jeff, to honor the fallen police officers?
Well, it will be in here, in this room, starting at, I think, 5:30, but we'll start gathering at 5:00 p.m. on that Tuesday, the 14th of May. It'll be in here in this facility. This will be probably the... Well, it'll be the eighth, I believe, year that we have done this, honoring the fallen officers that have passed away and died in the line of duty here in Haywood County. And we invite the public, and certainly welcome anyone else that wants to come as well, too.
Will you be sending an invite out for that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
And actually, that invitation should come out before the week is over, so if you can put that... Save the date up.
But you're going to have it here at 5:30, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's usually pretty well attended, I think.
It is. It's typically standing room only, yes.
Appreciate y'all doing that.
More than anything, we appreciate the outpouring and the attendance by the citizens of Haywood County. It shows the support that we have garnered through the Sheriff's Office and the police departments. Thank you.
Okay, is any other questions or comments for Jeff? Here now, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution honoring, I mean, proclaiming and recognizing May 12th through May 18th, 2019, as National Police Week.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, and then you're up next. The next is to request approval of a resolution honoring Detective Mitch McAfee for 23 years of law enforcement service, awarding his issued badge and sidearm.
Yes, Commissioners, once again, I come before you to look at this resolution to honor Mitch McAfee as a detective with the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, and he has retired just recently, and the resolution reads as such. "Whereas Detective Mitch McAfee joined the Haywood County Sheriff's Office on 31 January 2013 as a deputy sheriff and held the rank of deputy sheriff and detective within the Criminal Investigations Division, and whereas Detective McAfee's service and dedication to Haywood County Sheriff's Office and the service, dedication, and accomplishments within the field of law enforcement during his six and a half years out of his total 23 years of service are hereby recognized and commended. Whereas under North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, providing that retiring officers of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office may receive at the discretion to award to a retiring officer the sidearm of such retiring officer at a price determined by the Board of Commissioners upon securing a permit as required by North Carolina General Statute 14-402. And whereas Detective McAfee has served as a member of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office and is retiring from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office on 18 April, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners as follows. Sheriff Greg Christopher is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, allowing transfer to Detective McAfee the badge worn by him during his service with the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff Greg Christopher is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, allowing transfer to Detective McAfee the badge... Excuse me, his sidearm at agreed-upon cost of $186.75 upon the securing of a permit as required by General Statute 14-402. And be it further resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Detective McAfee for his dedicated service to Haywood County and its citizens, this being adopted the 15th day of April, 2019."
Anybody have any questions or comments for Greg? I mean, not Greg, for Jeff. Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to... We approve the resolution honoring Detective Mitch McAfee for 23 years of law enforcement service, awarding his issued badge and sidearm.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, the fifth item of business is to request approval of a proclamation recognizing, and I'm going to let Bryant pronounce this because I didn't learn how to do it, and so thank you, Bryant, for doing this.
I believe we actually have a guest here to talk about Tachi and Chi Gong, if that's correct.
Do you want him to come up? Did you say you had somebody?
Yeah.
I think so.
That's Paul Casper.
Okay. Good, I'm glad you're here.
This is the 20th anniversary of this worldwide celebration originated by Mr. Bill Douglas in Kansas. And what happens on the 27th of April, or the last Saturday in April every year, is the, at 10 o'clock AM in every time zone around the world, Tai Chi and Qi Gong are celebrated, demonstrated for the purpose of educating the public about the extraordinary health benefits that Qi Gong and Tai Chi have to offer. And a little over a year and a half ago, I discovered it. And I'm an engineer. I research everything. And my research just absolutely flabbergasted me as to the health benefits of these, these two related regimens. And so we, I got some friends together. We started classes and we decided that the 80% of the seniors in Haywood County that are sedentary needed to know about these gentle, very, very easy to do exercises. And so we started in my basement, transferred to my church, and now we're at Angie's Dance Academy. And we have four classes a week there. And we're doing everything we can to raise the profile of Tai Chi in Haywood County and attract people. All of our classes are free. There is no cost. We don't want cost to be a barrier to anybody that, that could benefit from these, these exercises. So the Governor of North Carolina has just issued a similar proclamation in support of this, of this day. And, and we have asked all the mayors and the, the board here to issue, if they would issue similar proclamations, which we will present on April the 27th at, at Angie's.
I appreciate you coming and talking about it. I know Bryant, I think Frank, didn't you have, you talked about it at our agenda setting meeting, some of the things that you'd seen?
Well, my cousin, Joe Sam's wife, Dr. Kate Queen, a rheumatologist here in the county, has, has been prescribing for her patients Tai Chi type and Tai Chi exercises to improve core strength, balance, to resist falls. It's, she became aware of it in, in part of her research on the benefits of a physical therapy component for fall prevention for older people. And it's an incredibly valuable resource. It's an incredible, the fact that it's free is amazing because it's, it's one of those low cost, no cost things that everyone can do and that especially less active people can gain incredible benefits from following this kind of a program. So Kate just, Kate was preaching about it like crazy. She's retired now, but she's got a whole bunch.
We have asked, we have asked her to come say a few words on April 27th in support of it.
And yeah, she signs them up. She's like, well, anyway, no matter what you had when you went in to see Kate, you got a prescription for Tai Chi when you left. So.
I didn't know that.
That's, that was, that was her thing. And it's, it's, she's documented the benefit of the, of the engaging in the process. So I think it's a wonderful program. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you Frank. I knew Frank had a great explanation when we were doing our, our agenda setting. Because I'd never heard of it and it seems like it's really a good program, especially for seniors when you're, when you prevent them from falling.
One in, one in five falls over 65 results in death.
Oh wow. I didn't know that.
It's an epidemic. Tai Chi, Tai Chi and Qi Gong reduce the likelihood of that by 50%.
Okay. Wow. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for coming and presenting.
Is there a, is there a proclamation?
Yeah. It's in the.
Oh, we're just adopting the one in there?
It's in the.
I thought Bryant might could read it for us.
Is that your?
You wanna read that?
I don't have it. My iPad's not working. It's really not.
Even try. Yeah. You wanna read that? Is, is that? I can read it if you want me to. Okay, okay. I'll do it. April 27th, that's, that's what's in our iPad. "April 27th throughout the world is recognized as World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day. Millions of practitioners in over 80 countries will commence demonstrating this graceful restorative disciplines to the general public at exactly 10:00 AM local time. The proceedings will commence in the eastern time, easternmost time of Samoa and westward through Oceana, Asia, Africa, Europe, North and South America, and terminate almost 24 later, hours later in Hawaii. You are invited to consult the WorldTaiChiDay.org website for more information. In recognition of the extraordinary health benefits of these ancient disciplines supported by hundreds of rigorous scientific evidence-based clinical studies, state, county, and city dignitaries throughout the United States have issued proclamations in support of this day. This year Tai Chi and Qi Gong classes from Haywood as well as Asheville are gathering at Angie's Dance Academy in Clyde on Saturday, April 27th to teach and demonstrate these unique exercise regimens to the general public at no cost. Accordingly, we would, we would like to invite your organization to present a proclamation in support of this day if you would, and present it in person at 9:30 AM Saturday, the 27th in Studio 5 at Angie's. All of us involved with Tai Chi and Qi Gong believe it is the very best exercise for health program available to senior citizens with negligible chance of injury. Thus far, governors in over 20 states and countless city and county dignitaries have recognized the health benefits of Tai Chi and Qi Gong and have issued proclamations in support of their practice by the general public. We have included in this package copies, is that? I'm reading the wrong thing. Okay. Thank you. All right. This is the proclamation. I'm sorry.
Thought that was informative.
Well, yeah, that was part of what, what's going on. So, and I think it's interesting that Angie's Dance Studio is, is doing this because there's a lot of folks that recognize that. And, and then Dr. Kate Queen is, was, was a very well respected rheumatologist in the county. And she prescribes this. So, "Whereas Tai Chi is a slow motion moving meditative exercise for relaxation and self-defense defense. Qi Gong is a self-healing art that combines breathing movement and meditation with visualizations employed to enhance the mind-body connection and assist in healing. And whereas originally from China, Tai Chi and Qi Gong have gained enormous popularity in the United States and throughout the world for their health benefits. And whereas scientific and medical studies have proven the benefits of Tai Chi and Qi Gong for stress relief, improved balance, and coordination among the elderly, and improved behavior for adolescents with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, or ADHD. And whereas Tai Chi and Qi Gong are used as helpful stress managers and behavior modifiers for drug abusers and incarcerated individuals and penal systems throughout the United States. And whereas World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day is celebrated annually around the world on the last Saturday in April. This observance is meant to bring practitioners together and allow people to learn more about Tai Chi and Qi Gong through a day of celebration, peace, and harmony. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haywood County, North Carolina, does hereby call upon citizens to recognize April 27th, 2019 as World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day in North Carolina, adopted this 50th day of April, 2019."
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those, any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next order of business is a resolution, is a request approval of a resolution seeking legislative support for local governments regarding voting machines. And we have our county manager Bryant Moorhead.
To summarize quickly, thank you. Haywood County along with 21 other counties in the state use direct record electronic voting systems. At the end of, or December 1st, 2019, those are not going to be certified by the state, but there's a lack of certified machines. Guilford County has passed a resolution asking the state to extend the deadline. And we're asking to, to join that resolution and get the state to give an extension to 2022. So if, if it's your pleasure, I'll read the, the full resolution. Whereas Haywood County currently uses direct record electronic voting machines or DRE, which utilizes a touchscreen with electronic tabulation along with a voter verified paper backup. And whereas Haywood County along with 21 other counties in North Carolina will soon have their voting systems decertified for use in future elections in order to remain in compliance with Session Law 2013-281, Section 30.8 and 30.9 amended by Session Law 2015-103, which was set, which has set December 1st, 2019 as a deadline for decertification of this equipment. And whereas the impending deadline fails to consider serious concerns regarding the lack of availability of certified equipment, current timeliness, possible conflicting federal mandates, and cost to local governments. The State Board of Elections has only certified one system, which is in Haywood County's case, a progressive system in comparison to existing and future technology. Newer and more modern and varied technology currently in use by other states has been pending certification by the North Carolina Board of Education since 2014. And whereas acquisition of new technology after the 2019 municipal elections in November and leading to the absentee by mail requirements in January place an extreme hardship for accurate testing, training, and deployment of new voting machines within this window. And whereas federal U.S. House Bill 1, having currently passed the U.S. House, will disallow our current system in 2022. This generates concern that if Haywood County should comply with the existing state requirements to decertify in 2019, which requires the county to purchase a new system, the pending federal bill may require newer restrictions thereby requiring the county taxpayers to repurchase newer equipment again in 2022. And whereas Haywood County urges the General Assembly to take the more prudent approach to deferring decertification until 2022 in order to allow the state elections board more time to certify newer, modern, and diverse technology and while synchronization with federal election regulations reducing the very risk of duplication of cost within a four-year window. Now therefore be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners hereby request that the General Assembly vote in support of deferring the decertification of election voting machines until 2022. I know Mr. Edmonds here, if you want technical answers to anything, but for the last two years, we've budgeted $800,000 to, to buy new machines. We don't have those that are available, that are certified. So, you know, in my opinion, this is, this request is timely, that we, we don't budget money for machines that we may not get, and we get more use out of machines that are still working. It's just a certification issue.
Right. That's what I understood too. Okay.
I'll move to approve. I'm, I'm, I will move to approve the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. All those indicate by saying aye. Okay. You wanna oppose? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay. Thank you all. Our next item of business is to request approval of an upset bid to purchase resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property. And this is parcel number 8713-53-6585. Bryant?
So this is another upset bid parcel. This is Lot 6, Section B of Hurricane Ridge. Total assessed value is $27,900. We've received a first offer to purchase in the amount of $500 on January 10th from Coast to Coast. We presented it to the board on the January 22nd meeting. We have received four upset bids by one bidder and three upset bids by another. So two distinct bidders. The ultimate high bidder is Coast to Coast, who was the original bidder, at $1,000 plus average housing cost of $772.24.
Okay. So, so this has been through the upset bid process and people, and you didn't have thousands of people bidding on them or anything, right?
Two.
Two people. Okay.
We have one parcel left that's going through the process now.
You wanna comment on that Tracy?
We could have Tracy come up and talk about it if.
She loves coming to the podium.
Can't hear her. I can't hear Tracy.
You're gonna do good Tracy.
Okay. The two lots that we have left at Hurricane Ridge that we are selling together. The 10-day upset bid period ended at 5:00 today. I did receive another upset bid this afternoon. So it starts another 10 days. It'll be advertised on Friday. And the 10-day upset bid period will end on Monday, the 29th.
Okay. How much is it at, right? How much, how much would they have to bid to upset? Would you know that number?
The, the current upset bid is $2,300 plus advertising cost.
And that's for two parcels and they adjoin each other, I believe. So.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you. We always said we was gonna get her up here and we did. So, thank you Tracy. You did good.
Mission accomplished.
Yeah. So we just got one of those left. And I think we had five or six to start with probably. So, okay. Does anybody have any questions about it or anything? No? Okay. I think this was a large parcel, maybe four or five acres. And it was very steep from what I remember. Probably, anyway, I won't comment on them.
There's a reason they call it Hurricane Ridge.
Yeah. I guarantee you yesterday it was an apt name for it. And probably this morning, as windy as it was. Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the upset bid and offer to purchase resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property of parcel 8713-53-6585.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's, you know. Okay. The eighth item is to request approval of a conveyance of county-owned property to the Town of Waynesville Development and Facilities Director Chris Boyd is here to talk about that.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm requesting the conveyance of three parcels owned by the county to the Town of Waynesville. These three parcels of land are directly related to the Barber's Orchard water system. The county was the grant recipient and the mechanism for controlling that project. Somewhere through the process, these parcels got missed. There is two on Red Bank Road. There's one on Hot Creek, each of which is directly associated with this water system. The Town of Waynesville basically owns and controls the water system, all the equipment. So they should own the land as well.
Where, where were they again?
Two are on Red Bank Road up in the Barber's Orchard area and one is on Hot Creek.
I know one of them, the Red Bank Road has a water tank on it.
Yes.
And so that's what we're, it's not like you can put something else on it. So.
No. They're very small parcels and they're directly related to the public water system for Barber's Orchard.
So you don't see the county having any other use for those properties with the exception?
There's no way to build on them. There's no, there's, they're small. There's not enough to do anything with.
Okay.
When you say small, how small are you talking about? Feet or?
Some of them are a tenth of an acre, two tenths of an acre. The one with the water tank's a little larger than that. But we're not talking about acres. We're just fractions of acres.
I believe you told me earlier, Chris, when I asked you about that, that that was a project that was years ago and it's kinda just got lost in the shuffle.
Yeah. 10 plus years ago was that project when the contamination in the Superfund site and the cleanup occurred there. I think these should have been transferred at that point, but for some reason, we've held on to them. Seems timely to transfer those to the town now. now.
I had a, we did the surveying for the water line, it was before I became a Commissioner, but the reason I remember it, because my employee called me, and he said, "Something's happened at the Twin Towers." And so, it was, we were doing the survey in September of 2001. So, that's when that was being engineered, and then it was shortly thereafter that it was installed.
You remember exactly what you were doing that day, don't you?
I know, you do. I really do. I had a TV in my office, and I went and turned it on. And I was like, I didn't even know what the World Trade Towers were, but anyway, he had heard something out in the field, and I was in the office and hadn't heard a thing, so... But anyway, I remember that, so... But that's the job he was working on. He was going up, with the water line running from Deco up to Barber's Orchard, and we were doing the location along the road for it, so... Anyway, that's when it was. I mean, that's when, that's when that was installed, so it's been almost twenty years since that we've owned those parcels, and we don't need to be, you know, Town of Waynesville, they need to be, have control.
Doesn't seem necessary to own them when the town owns the infrastructure, the pump on Hot Creek, the water tank on, on Red Bank. They maintain it and have for years. It seems appropriate that the town also owns the land.
Anybody have any questions for Chris, or other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the conveyance of county-owned property to the Town of Waynesville on the three parcels, I believe, three parcels that are part of the water system that Chris has described.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris is up again, and Zandra, if she wants to come up. We need a, this is a request approval of household hazardous waste collection event, which will be on Sunday, May 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for Haywood County residents at the Materials Recovery Facility, and this will be paid for from budgeted funds. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting approval of this date for this event. Haywood County has not had an overall household collection event in some years, almost a decade. We do not have a permanent facility at the MRF to collect these materials on a daily basis, so we want to hold the event specifically for that. We are looking at that Sunday from 9:00 to 4:00, so we can use the MRF without interruption to normal business. We can have it specifically for this. We're looking to contract with a hazardous waste handling company called Eco Flow. They have an office out of Greensboro. According to our management contract with CWS, they are responsible for the first $20,000 of fees associated with the collections and disposal. The county would pick up the difference beyond $20,000. We have budgeted funds for that.
Okay, this comes out of the solid waste budget, which is that $160, whatever dollars we pay, sixty-four.
$164.
A year, so... Okay. And I would say, we haven't done this in several years, and, you know, we're gonna try to maybe start doing it once a year or once every other year, because if you don't do something like this, then folks will probably put it in a land, in the landfill by, you know, hiding it in a black plastic bag, and then it gets in our landfill, and it shouldn't be there. And that's the way they can dispose of it properly, and, and, you know, and that's better for the environment and everybody.
Most of these type materials are prohibited from being in the landfill, and we certainly want to offer the public the ability to properly dispose of those. But I know that we have seen some bags at the landfill that have been busted open during compaction that has wet paint in them. So, people do that clearly, so we really do want to hold this event on May 26th to offer that to the public.
Maybe the paper can get word out, too, because I think the last time we did that, it was, a lot of people came. So, we expect there to be a lot of, you know, it's just the one day, so... And it's on a Sunday, and you do have time after church to go. We made sure that we added a couple hours for that, so if you wanted to attend church that morning, you could do that. And the reason we have it on that day is so that the next day's a holiday, and we can make sure everything gets packaged up and sent out at the facility.
It will take some time to package, demobilize, and be prepared for transport. If we get overwhelmed with materials, because it's been a fairly long period of time, we do have the next day on Monday as a holiday to package that and remove it without interference with normal business.
Right, yeah. And this is the Sunday before Memorial Day, so, just so everybody knows.
Chris, could you maybe give a short list of what those materials might be?
Sure.
I mean, I know there's a bunch of them, but for the public's sake.
You want a bunch, or you want a few?
Just, just a few. You know, you mentioned paint.
Items like aerosol, latex paint, lead acid batteries, alkaline batteries, niacated batteries, lithium, mixed solvents, propane cylinders for camp grills, or, or even the small ones for lanterns, mercury debris, acid cleaners, fluorescent bulbs, oil filters, paint, other paint-related materials, fire extinguishers, other type cylinders. You know, there's any number of things that's considered household hazardous waste.
Is there somewhere, maybe online, they could go look at this list?
We will have it advertised once the date's approved.
Okay, that'd be good.
We'll put it on our website, and we've talked with Candy about the Sunshine List, the newspaper, the government channel.
That'd be good.
Absolutely.
In your opinion, somebody shows up, and they've got something that you might think's industrial, where do you send them? I mean, if somebody came, and they had something that didn't meet your criteria, would you instruct them on where to take it?
Well, we, we think that we have everything listed here, that if there's something not, we'll certainly try to make arrangements to take care of that for an individual.
The reason I ask, I know some people over in Bethel from the floods '04, they had some of these big gas cylinders that floated from somewhere up the river on their property. And I know one guy's got one tied up. Don't know if there's anything in it or not, but he's, he'd ask me what to do with it, and I said, "Well, ask some of these tomato farmers."
You're talking about a large tank, maybe a...
It looks like a gas cylinder.
Three hundred gallon?
Where they put down plastic or something, you know, and it just floated down during the flood and landed on this guy's property, so...
I don't know that we're prepared to handle those size gas cylinders because of the loading and the space they take. Typically, those will belong to the company. Most folks do not own those. You rent those, those large cylinders from a hundred pound up, but certainly I can work with him to try to dispose of that properly.
Do maybe just give you a call?
Sure, absolutely.
Or, or, okay, or Zandra?
Either one.
Zandra's always at the phone. Chris, maybe not so much. He's out and about. Do we, let's see, do we need a motion, I guess?
I move to approve the household hazardous waste collection event for Sunday, May 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And this is only for Haywood County residents to be held at the Materials Recovery Facility.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate y'all doing this. Okay, and then the tenth item of regular business is request approval to award a contract to Messer Heating and Air for the construction of new propane tube heaters at the Haywood County Fairgrounds, and to provide HVAC for the office kitchen in the amount of $29,995 to be paid from budgeted funds. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will see in your packet three estimates for this project from Messer Heating and Air, Gentry, and Lead Batter. The current heaters in the two buildings, Apple and Dogwood, are ceramic propane heaters. They're in excess of twenty years old. Some of those heaters are broken, and we can't even purchase parts to repair them. So, we investigated several different types of heat systems. One of the ones that the Fairgrounds Board really liked was the tube propane heaters. They're being, they're being used in open spaces. Some of our fire departments have them, a couple of local repair shops have them. Seem to be the best fit for those facilities. One of those buildings is 15,000 square foot. It will require four 125,000 BTU tube heaters. The other is 10,000 square feet. It will require four 90,000 BTU heaters. In addition to that, we'd like to put a Mitsubishi mini-split system in the kitchen and the office for heating and air. So, with the three bids, you will see that Messer Heating and Air was the lowest. We'd like to award that contract to them for construction and installation.
And I've been on the Fairgrounds Board for years and years, and the, I know those heaters aren't really efficient, probably, that we do have, and they're not really working efficiently now, if they work at all.
Well, they don't work, some of them don't work at all, so...
Yeah. And I will say that the building is probably, it was probably built in 1990, so it's probably thirty years old, or close to it.
And the heaters may date back to then. I know, I know they're in excess of twenty years old.
Yeah. So, it's, yeah. We've definitely got good service out of what was there, so... And we had budgeted money for a roof, which we were able to find a different fix for it, so that it made this funds available. And it's very needed out there at the fairgrounds, so I'm glad that we were able to replace them, you know, because that facility's used quite a bit. I know it wasn't in the past, but we've, she's got almost every weekend rented at the fairgrounds, so there's something going on there all the time. So, it's usually, you know, really good, it's a really economic development events also, you know. You can have, and I know it's heads and beds, we have events there where people come from as far, I know that some of the dog shows, they come as far as Puerto Rico, and then out in the western states and stuff. So, anyway, the facility's very much used, so... Anyway, I'll entertain a motion that we approve to award the contract to Messer Heating and Air for the construction of the new propane tube heaters, and to provide HVAC for the office and kitchen in the amount of $29,995.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments? I was, I was kind of grandstanding there.
I would like to thank Chris for his attention to this matter. I just got on as Fairgrounds Board when I got elected, been on there about four months now, so appreciate Chris's attention and to this matter. I know it's been something that's been on the boards of mine for some time. And I do appreciate your, your guidance on that roof replacement, which turns out, probably don't need to replace it. We just need to chase a few leaks down, and we did get something back from that drone technology that we got a tip from Bryant and Mr. Pless and I went to, and I think he utilized that. It's pretty neat. I think it's something we can probably use in the future on some other roofs that's got some technology there that's gonna save us some money.
Absolutely. The infrared thermo technology is cutting-edge, and it's very accurate.
Yeah.
I would like to use it on some of our other buildings, where we're experiencing some minor roof leaks as well.
Did, did, did the HCC use it? Have they, on their building? HCC, the community?
I don't know. I used a local group, a gentleman named Alan Newland, that had the drone and the camera.
He does a good job for...
I don't think he did. I think we suggested it to him.
Yeah, that's right.
And they said they'd look at that.
Yeah, because when you have a metal roof, they last a long time. They should last a long time. And so, that's what we're, that's what these are, metal roofs.
They are. Most of those have a minimum fifty-year lifespan on them.
Yeah.
You can just keep them attached correctly and keep some of the joints and seams sealed.
Right. My grandfather's house is over a hundred years old, and he always kept it painted, and as far as I know, it's still not leaking, so it's an old tin roof. Okay, anyway. So, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Chris. Okay, the last appointments is our last item of business, is to request approval of appointments to boards and committees, and I'll, I'll just have Bryant go ahead with the rest of that.
Thank you. I have one reappointment and three appointments to the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Jeanette Craig, by the State Almond Spudsmann, says she's a wonderful member, and she would, he would love for her to be reappointed to a three-year term. The other three people have all gone through their orientation and have been designated by the Office of the State Long-Term Care for reappointment. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll do one, can we do all these at once then? Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jeannie Craig and appoint Marla Stennett, Antoinette Morris, and Arthur Dosch Jr. to the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Why are you looking at me?
I'm just...
I think I'm doing something. Did I skip something?
No, no.
Okay, 'cause I could have.
Pay him a little bit.
Yeah, is there, is there, okay, that concludes our business. Is there anything else that we need to...
Just a comment to Mr. Paris. I appreciate you coming. I did look at my calendar. I'm sorry I won't be there. I've already got prior commitment on that date and time. All right.
And we do appreciate everything that you, you know, the sheriff has, well, the community has prayer, prayer walks, and he's, the sheriff's said that when they have those prayer walks, that the calls to EMS go down, I mean, to 911, those calls go down when that prayer's happening. So, prayer does work, I think, if we pay attention. I thought that was neat, that he pointed that out, so... But we appreciate that. Appreciate all y'all do for the, for the community. Okay, is anything else? I'll entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.